We'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And being the memorial of 9/11, I would like to have a moment of silence for all the heroes that were killed on 9/11 and those that have died from the effects of what happened on 9/11. So please give us a moment. Thank you. All right, roll call, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. There's no report out from closed session? Any conflict of interest declarations? Seeing none, any changes or deletions?
No changes to the agenda, Mayor.
Moving to public comments, any person wishing to speak on an item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on an item not on the agenda? Please step up to the microphone, state your name for me, even though I know you.
Mayor Lands, council members, city staff, the community of Cloverdale. My name is Nicole Byrd, and I am the branch manager of the Cloverdale Regional Library. And September is library card signup month. So Sonoma County Libraries has launched two new library card designs. And if I could, I have, I do have a show and tell. I don't know how this will show up, maybe not. Can we focus on the? It's okay. Anyway, we've got two new library card designs. One is a new peanuts design, which was created by the Charles Schultz Associates in collaboration with the Sonoma County Library. So there's two new designs. And it says libraries are for everyone, and we do have one in English and one in Spanish. And we also have one that was designed by a seventh grader, Caleb T. He won a contest, and it says, everyone's invited. Plus, we have two other new ones. We have the Flickers Limited Edition Library Card and the Free People Read Freely Library Card. So the library is inviting all those community members that do not already have a library card to come in and sign up for an account. If you already have a library card and you would want one of these new designs, you are welcome to come in and exchange your current library card for one of the new design. Or if you're one of those people who has their library card number memorized and it's very cherished to you, we have stickers of the new designs that we can place on your old library card. So, thank you. And again, I want to invite the community to stop by the library anytime, get a new card, come see what's happening, enjoy many of the services that are brought to you freely. Thank you very much.
Nicole, is that a poster that we could keep?
I can give you this poster, yes.
I would love to have it. If you could give it to Michael and we could hang it at City Hall, it'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you so much for your, for your presentation. Anyone else in the audience? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
And seeing none, we'll move on to the Student Liaison Report. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our new student liaison. And instead of me introducing, I would like her to introduce herself and tell us a little bit about you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Keiko Saito. I was born and raised here in Cloverdale. I am 17 years old. I am a senior here at Cloverdale High, which means I'm doing a lot of college stuff currently. And for college, I'm hoping to go to some UC. That's like my dream. And I really want to study mechanical engineering. That's a brief, Mel.
Any extracurriculars or anything that you do?
Extracurriculars? I've been playing softball for about on and off seven years now. I also like to play the piano, but I think that's about everything.
So in other words, Keiko's amazing, and we're lucky to have her, and I'm excited that she's here.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Anybody want to?
Well, I'll see all the skits again at the rally Friday.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we take a picture with you, Keiko?
Oh, of course.
The council take a picture with you? And if Mom wants to join, or you want to take a couple pictures with your mom, it's totally welcome. Mom, you want to take some pictures with her? With her in the picture? All right, Keiko, your first student liaison report.
All right, here's my report. The Washington Middle School PTSA is currently running a pick a date fundraiser where participants can pick a date and donate the corresponding amount on the calendar. September 10th means $10, 11th means $11, and so on. The deadline for donations is September 30th. A sweet treat party will be thrown for the top earning class of each grade. Homecoming Week is currently this week at the high school. This has come with many events such as Spirit Week, the Homecoming Parade, Rally, Game, and of course, the Homecoming Dance. The theme for this dance is tangled in our memories. In this year's parade themes are all music with pop for freshmen, country for sophomores, disco for juniors, and R&B slash hip-hop for seniors. Each grade has spent the past few weeks creating both a float for the parade and a short skit, which has been performed today at the plaza during the parade and will be again this Friday during the rally. Voting for homecoming royalty has been opened from Monday to Tuesday and will be revealed at the halftime show during homecoming game on Friday. Also for sports, football has won their first home game of the season, beating Vacaville 43 to 0. Cross-country is also having their first meet today in Fort Bragg. Lastly, SAT signups have been open for all juniors and seniors. The deadline to sign up is next Friday, September 20th. The test will be held on October 29th. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Phenomenal job. Phenomenal job. Thank you for everything. Any questions or comments for Keiko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just say, that was really a very good report that you did, and you could tell you were enthusiastic about it, and I look forward to hearing you all as long as you're going to be here. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Keiko. That was great. Appreciate it. We will move on to Proclamations. E1, the Proclamation, Pollution Prevention Week, and Creek Week. Is there anyone that would like to read this? Councilmember Morganstern?
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming the week of September 16 to 23, 2024 is Pollution Prevention Week and September 22 to 29, 2024 as Creek Week in the Russian River Watershed. Whereas throughout the United States of America, the week starting on the third Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas throughout much of California, including the Russian River Watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the fourth week of September as Creek Week. And whereas our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershed lands and waterways. And whereas nearly 1,500 square miles of lands, 150 creeks, and approximately 350,000 residents of the Russian River Watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas the City of Cloverdale supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River Watershed lands and waterways. And whereas pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry and everyday living, and sediment from construction, and many land uses and activities, all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of resources within the Russian River Watershed. And whereas the Russian River, along with its tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma County. Whereas the City of Cloverdale strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise awareness of the harmful effects of pollutants to our natural systems. And whereas during Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, river and ocean cleanup campaigns will take place throughout the Sonoma and Mendocino County and the City of Cloverdale. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Lands, proclaim September 16 to 23, 2024 as Pollution Prevention Week and September 22 to 29, 2024 as Creek Week in the Russian River Watershed, and ask all of the members of our community to support efforts to protect and enrich our watershed health by participating with the many Pollution Prevention Week, Creek Week activities, and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for our environment throughout the year. So ordered September 11, 2024 by Mayor Todd Lands.
Thank you so much for that. Anyone have any?
This Creek Week, I would like to encourage everybody, I mean Cloverdale residents or people that come down and enjoy our river trails, and just take a look around, and you'd be amazed at how much gets tossed in there. Our Public Works crews, I think at one time we filled up two 40-yard dumpsters just from our river trail down there. So it's pretty amazing, and I'm down there quite a bit and walking, and if you do your part, like I said, you'd be amazed at what you find. I've come out of there with a full trash bag almost every time I go down there. So please participate or jump in and give our crews a hand and, and keep this place cleaned up and keep Cloverdale the way we want to keep, you know, see it. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, members of council, I wanted to just take the opportunity to introduce Sabrina Marson. Sabrina is here on behalf of the Russian River Watershed Association, and just acknowledge her presence if you wanted to provide her with the Creek Week proclamation this evening.
I would love that. Sabrina, would you mind coming forward?
My name's Sabrina, and on behalf of RRWA staff and our member agencies, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the city for passing the proclamation recognizing Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week. This acknowledgement underscores the importance of our local waterways and the collective efforts needed to preserve them. As mentioned earlier, we are hosting or working with different organizations to host various creek cleanups throughout the watershed. Two events will be happening here in Cloverdale. If you're interested in learning more, you can reach out to Russian River Keeper or our website, which is RRwatershed.org. So thank you again. We appreciate your support and commitment to the environment.
Great, thank you. And do you mind if we take a picture with you? Michael, do you want us to try to stay up on the stage for this one? Yeah, you have a black background on this side if you guys want to come across. Yes, sir. Over to the far side, guess. Over here, there's a black.
Thank you, Nicole.
Just do what you're told.
Mayor, for the record, do you happen to? Can somebody repeat what her name was?
Moving on, G, the Consent Calendar. All items under the Consent Calendar will be considered together by one action of the City Council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would anyone at council like to pull an item? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public that would like to pull any of these items? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Motion second.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll move into new business. I1, Seeking Direction on Potential Vacancy Ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, council directed staff to initiate preparation of a vacancy ordinance to address some of the vacant commercial buildings in downtown. Our Community Development Director, Assistant City Manager, has, in preparation for drafting an ordinance, has prepared some, basically, goals as well as policy considerations for council to provide direction on. And Kevin's going to cover those tonight with you to get your input and feedback. Ultimately, we'll take that input and feedback, bring back a draft ordinance for further conversation discussion, starting with the council subcommittee, and then bring that back to council for, for further consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director to give you an overview of the items tonight.
Oh, sorry, David. Thanks, David. Mayor, council members, so we are starting the conversation of a potential vacancy ordinance. This has been discussed for a while. We started talking about it kind of pre-COVID, but now we're back with this, with this idea. Really what it does is it requires owners of commercial properties to register that every year, and with that, there's a fee. And part of that would be that we would have a current contact person, so we know who to contact if there's a problem, or if there's a management company. It's really what it does is, you know, it's not super punitive, but I think it does do a couple things. It, you know, gives us the current contact, and increases, I think, our communication between the city and the property owners, so that we can, you know, have discussions with them. And I think it kind of maybe puts them on a little bit of an alert that we're watching, and, you know, it's on our radar, and we want to work with them to fill those vacancies. So there's a number of questions that I would like to seek answers to at a subcommittee. I can just give you like a preview of what those are. You know, one of the, in some of the, my reviewing of the ordinances, some cities do require an inspection every year, which I think would be a good idea with the fire department and maybe the building department. And we would, we would include that in their annual fee, so we could cover the cost on that. There's other things like fines if they fail to register, maybe waivers in certain cases. Do we want this to be just downtown, or do we want it to be citywide? I'm not really, so we're going to be working through these questions at the subcommittee and bringing back a draft ordinance. One of the thoughts I had was that we could use the OpenGov portal for the registration so that the property owner could go, log on there, select, you know, vacant property registry, and so that we collect the money efficiently and easily, and using our existing computer software to do so. So again, we're just really looking for direction from the council to bring this to the Police, Admin, and Finance Subcommittee. That was the one, we're open to suggestions if you, if you think a better subcommittee would, would handle this. So we're looking for direction to do that, and then bring back an ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. You want me to go now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Kevin, thank you. You know, I think this is long overdue. I know councilmember has been talking about maybe doing something like this for a while, and like I said, I think it's long overdue. You know, my personal opinion, and I know a lot of these questions are going to be at the subcommittee, which subcommittee would be doing this, do you know?
We were thinking Police, Finance, and Admin. Unless there's other suggestions, I think we're open to, to that.
I just think we, we should start slow and just concentrate on the core downtown, Lake Street to Third Street and Main to Commercial. But, you know, it's a shame we have such beautiful buildings, like the Canton Restaurant, the old bank building to mention too, and then there's a couple empty lots that possibly could be developed on. And it's prime downtown commercial property, and it should be utilized for the betterment of the community. So I'm all for it, forward, I'm all for it, and anything I can do to help, let me know. Thank you.
I'm all for it, and I know our Chamber of Commerce would like to see, you know, thriving restaurants in some of our empty buildings, and it would only help our economy and help, you know, draw people to our city if every building that's currently empty downtown was utilized. And I also would like to see hefty fines for people that just want to leave their building empty for years. It's important that they do something for Cloverdale and for our community, and keeping their building just empty because they can, I think is unreasonable.
Just typically, the fee that we would charge would cover our costs to administer. There is other vacancy ordinances that are more punitive, but those are voter initiatives, and I know Alex knows.
Yeah, so if we aren't able to charge a fee that's greater than our cost of administering the program, so if we wanted to do something like a fine for that, we can of course find businesses that aren't meeting our, or buildings that aren't in compliance with our municipal code provisions about maintenance, and we could look at those and change those about, you know, broken windows or tall grass or things like that. But just for being vacant, the only way we could charge someone for that was by enacting a vacancy tax, and that would require a ballot measure and voter approval.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. After reading that, I'm just kind of, and the two buildings that councilmember Walter mentioned was the Canton and the bank. And I'm just wondering, when was the last time we had like the fire chiefs or fire service go in and actually do an inspection on those to, up to this point right now? Because I'm not sure when the last thing was done. I know that's needed bad.
The Canton was inspected by the fire chief and the building official about four years ago. In terms of the, the bank building, David and I were in there probably three years ago, but we didn't do an inspection. But, but yeah, that's why we think including the inspection process would be, would be beneficial, and that would be our recommendation to the subcommittee.
And I'm wondering if that should be an annual, that fire inspection should be an annual along with this, because I guess the, my concern is that, that Canton building there's, I mean, it's tied into a new restaurant. They just got run in the chamber and everything. I mean, you know, I'd like to see fire come in and get that thing, whatever they have to do to get it cleaned up, so we don't have an issue between the other buildings right there. So, cool.
Sorry, with the, I'm not clear, the inspection include a fire inspection or just city building officials?
I would hope that it could be both. When we did our inspection at the Canton, we had the fire marshal and the building official, which I thought was good.
Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, I just, having read the agenda report and the two attachments, I think you, you're headed in the right direction from, if I remember correctly, from 2019, which a few things have happened since then. So, yeah, I think if it gets a thorough hearing in Finance, Admin, and Police, and hopefully, you know, the local businesses and property owners would be invited to, you know, be a part of the conversation, give some input as to, that's practical, especially the, the local property managers, that would probably be beneficial, just so that it's not kind of coming out of nowhere for them. But yeah, this is, this is long overdue, and I think it's really going to help our economic development efforts. So thanks for bringing it forward.
At this point, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment regarding this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Sounds like the direction is to send it to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee. Anyone have any other suggestions? Seeing none, then that's what the direction will be. Is there anything else you need from us at this point, Kevin?
Thank you.
You got it. All right, we'll move into I2, Successor Memorandum of Understanding with the Cloverdale Classified Service Employees Association, and authorizing the city manager to execute the MOU on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just a quick background on this item. The City of Cloverdale entered into Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, with one of your represented employee groups referred to as the Cloverdale Classified Service Employees Association, or otherwise known as Classified Group. This, this group represents 11 employees. Most of the employees are within the Public Works Department, but there's also staff in engineering and planning as well as parks. City staff began the, or myself and our labor negotiator, along with our HR team, began negotiating a successor MOU for the existing MOU that terminated on June 30th of 2024. The new proposed successor MOU would cover a two-year term from July 1, 2024 of this year to June 30th of 2026. Included in the successor MOU is, or are, two cost of living adjustments, or COLAs. For the current fiscal year, the COLA would be 2.5%. For year two, starting July 1, 2025, it would be between 0 and 2.5% based on the change in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, effective April of that year. in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, effective April of that year. Other minor changes to the MOU included changing the vacation accrual schedule to be the same for all classified employees, as well as the sick leave accrual, and removal of the sick leave cap to address separation, being able to cash out sick leave for, upon separation from the city. And last but not least, changing the floating holiday accrual rates. Included in your packet is a copy of the draft MOU. Based on our negotiation process, staff recommends approval of the successor MOU and the resolution adopting it in your packet. Happy to entertain any questions council may have.
Thank you, David. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, we've all been part of the process, so there's nothing we're not familiar with. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this MOU? Thank you, I'll bring it back. The one thing I would like to see as these start getting approved is an update to the budget so we can see where we are. I know you have it under, under control and starting, but I just wanted to make that announcement in public that, you know, as we've closed out the year, I really want to see where we're at so we can see what next year's going to hold for us.
And Mayor, we will absolutely be bringing forward a budget adjustment to reflect the fiscal impact of the successor MOUs. Our plan was to do a comprehensive budget adjustment that reflects all of the amended labor agreements. Do want to note for the public that if they're interested in looking at the financial impact of any one of these MOUs, it's included and provided for in the agenda report. And so, but ultimately, there'll be, that'll all be summarized in one budget adjustment that will be brought forward for council's consideration.
Thank you, sir. With that, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve and adopt resolution.
Read by title only.
Okay. Adopt resolution entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving a Successor Memorandum of Understanding with the Cloverdale Classified Service Employees Association, and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Memorandum of Understanding on behalf of the city."
Have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you for all your hard work on this, David, Shannon, Suzie, everyone that was Moving into I-3, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving an Amended Compensation Plan for Unaffiliated Employees Implementing Cost of Living Adjustments and Other Minor Amendments."
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to the action taken by council to approve the MOU with Classified Group, we have a group of employees that are unrepresented. They tend to be your mid-management group. Currently, there are four classifications covered by the compensation plan for unaffiliated employees. Those employees are your finance and HR analyst, finance and HR manager, parks superintendent, and last but not least, police lieutenant. Two of those positions are unfilled at this time, and they're not funded, but they are listed as covered positions within the MOU. Much like we did for the Classified Group, a successor compensation plan was drafted based on similar terms and conditions. The proposed successor compensation plan is for a two-year term, starting July 1 of this year, ending June 30th of 2026. Included in this compensation plan is a cost of living adjustment of 3.5% effective July 1, and 3% effective July 1, 2025. That comes with a change in the medical coverage, which is going to offset a portion of the costs of that COLA, which would change the benchmark medical plan from the EPO, what's referred to as the EPO 250, to an EPO 500, which will generate long-term savings for the city by making this change. There's, there also were some change in the accrual schedules to make it, again, as consistent as possible across the board for our employees. But otherwise, there were just, you know, minor, minor updates to the unaffiliated compensation plan. With that, staff does recommend approval of the resolution approving the amended compensation plan. Happy to entertain any questions council may have.
Thank you, David. Any questions, comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have?
Motion to approve and read by title only, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving an Amended Compensation Plan for Unaffiliated Employees Implementing Cost of Living Adjustments and Other Minor Amendments."
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgenstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wheeler?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you for your hard work on this. Subcommittee reports.
Anyone have any reports? For subcommittees? Okay. Any approvals and media are available on our website. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Bagby's was submitted in writing. Does anyone have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. I don't know if this is the time on the report.
Yes, okay.
Having to do with Councilmember Bagby's written report. And apparently, on August 30th, there was a meeting with Connolly. Is he from Sonoma County, Melanie? I don't, I recognize the name, but I can't quite.
Oh, Assemblymember Connolly represents Marin, but he is the new Assembly Chair of the Fair Board, and he was making a whistle-stop tour and with a member of the Sonoma County Fair Board emeritus. And at the last minute, they invited me to come along on the tour with the interim CEO of Citrus Fair, Karen Pulley. And it was a wonderful and enlightening meeting. It was very, it was really fun watching. Assemblymember Connolly, who I believe would be a self-described city slicker, and Tony Whitmore from longtime farmer in Sonoma County, a member of the Fair Board. They're like the, they're like an odd couple going around on these tours together. And then Karen, of course, is a longtime fair CEO and participant in 4H, so she just was educating the assembly member on the financial structure of the city fair, and then they were going to continue on to Ukiah. They weren't going to make Booneville on this tour, but they were going to continue north up to Humboldt County because pretty much, you know, every fair, every regional fair, their financial structure is different, and he just wanted to get a crash course on the fairs in the immediate area so he would understand what their needs are, how they're used for emergency services, you know, what the fair's role is, how important they are to the community, especially Cloverdale in particular. So it was pretty much just an educational tour for the assembly member who is Chair of the Fair Board, who probably hasn't been involved in fairs very much in his career up until, up until this time. So Karen was generous enough to take some time out of her day and, and give him a quick, and give him a quick tour and a primer, and kind of create that relationship, and then he and his staff will be following up with, with her and Citrus Fair staff going forward.
So nice. It was a last-minute put-together. Is Karen the new executive director?
She's the new interim CEO, Karen Pulley, and we are really lucky to have her. She has just a wealth of ton, just a wealth of fair experience. It was so funny to, you know, immediately, of course, she and Tony figured out that their kids were in 4H 30 years ago, and so we got, you know, it was just a real Sonoma County, you know, oh, you are my kid's 4H director, and we, and they did rabbits together and all that kind of stuff. And it was just, it was, it was a lot of fun, but it was also, you know, real business because fairs are an important part of our agricultural heritage, and they are, you know, really under threat. And I was really impressed with Assemblymember Connolly taking the time to really go on a really hardcore road trip and try to get out to as many fairs as he, as he possibly can of different sizes of, you know, pretty much every fair, as we were talking about, you know, the Cloverdale Citrus Fair is a 401 or a 501(c)(3). Other fairs are owned by their counties, you know, by the taxpayers. Other fairs, like in Marin County, he said, you know, the county actually puts on the fair. So pretty much for every different kind of fairgrounds, there's a different business model. And that's what he was really, you know, trying to wrap his head around and hoping to be helpful. As fairs, you know, they are under siege, they're having, as with so many entities, whether you're 501(c)(3) or not, they're facing different funding models, and he was just really trying to understand, you know, our fair's role in our community so that he can, you know, serve us in the assembly. So I was very impressed that he, you know, wanted to take the time to go and see and meet people and meet local people and really understand the challenges. And, you know, we talked a little bit about the importance of the emergency response and that the fair plays for Cloverdale in particular. And, you know, that's something that, and it's, it's a, it's a vital service that the Cloverdale Citrus Fair provides for, and they don't get nearly compensated enough for the cost of maintaining their facilities and providing that space when fire or emergency response need a facility. So it was great that he could see that firsthand. And what a great job they do when it's not fair time and it's not fire time, you know, all of the different funding sources that they have, like their camping and RV storage and how, we were showing him how, you know, there were several RVs parked in the livestock venue, for example, and those get moved for the period of the fair, and then they get fenced up, and that's where, you know, kids are showing their livestock. And so he was really impressed at how they're able to, you know, kind of flip over different uses and get different sources of revenue, and, but it's still, it's still challenging, you know, for our local fair. So, yeah, it was a really, it was one of those really great impromptu meetings I was very happy to be part of.
Thank you, Melanie.
Anyone else have anything? We'll move into legislative reports, letters of support and opposition. First one is a support letter for AB 1359.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The letter of support signed by the mayor is for AB 1359. This is a legislation that would modify state law to allow geothermal development projects to select their lead agency. Either it be currently under state law, it's required to be the California State Geological Energy Management Division, or CALGIM. The state law would, the proposed legislation would modify state law to allow for those entities that would like to carry out geothermal projects to choose between the county or our CALGIM. And there's some certain benefits to working with your lead agency, keeping it local than going through the state process, which can be, you know, more complex and more costly. So this reflects the support. I think it would have benefits for Sonoma Clean Power.
We'll move on to the next one. It's L2, a support letter for the SMART Plan Bay Area Amendment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This was brought up at the, during public comments at the August 28th council meeting. There was a request by a member of public to sign on to this proposed amendment, which we were already planning to do, and it was in the works. This is to support adding the extension of SMART Rail and the pathway network north to Healdsburg. Of course, in our interest to include the Cloverdale Station, the Cloverdale rail work necessary to bring SMART to Cloverdale, we reflected those comments in the letter of support for the plan amendment. This letter, signed by the mayor, was submitted online as part of the public comment process to Alfredo Pedrosa, the Chair of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission.
Any comments? I think it's sad that we weren't included in the 2050 plan. We paid for this, we're supposed to be part of it, and once again, Cloverdale was forgotten or left off on purpose, however they want to word it. So thank you guys for doing this. Next is the request letter for the IPAOM with Soda Springs Ranch.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We provided this for council reference. This is an amended request that staff submitted to Sonoma County Ag Plus Open Space District. This is in response to our original letter wherein we submitted a funding request that was approved by council. There was a number of comments provided back from the Open Space District staff, particularly there were some funding requests that were not, not approved pursuant to their IPAOM policy, and this letter reflects the updated request that we've made. And I will mention that we did send, I sent an email outlining the difference in our request and how it was modified to be more consistent with their policy, and also how we are reducing our funding request in an effort to get, to preserve, to get the funding in place as soon as possible so we can move forward with getting the necessary work completed to get the, get the support and open space open to public access.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All right, we'll move into the city manager report.
No reports, Mayor. I do want to note that I will be out of, out of the office tomorrow and Monday, taking some vacation days to attend a wedding in Washington. In my absence, our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Thompson, will be Acting City Manager from Thursday through Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know that at their meeting next week, the board supervisors is adopting an ordinance on tenant protections, and most of those protections don't apply within the city, therefore the unincorporated area. But there is one portion that will apply in Cloverdale, and that is an emergency language, basically implementing certain eviction protection, eviction protections county-wide, including incorporated and unincorporated areas, when the county makes certain emergency declaration findings. So just wanted to make the council aware of that. It's scheduled for its second reading and adoption at the next meeting.
Alex, do you have an example of what that emergency would look like?
So like, they did something similar at the beginning of COVID, so sort of large-scale emergency that's causing. They'd have to make findings as to why it's necessary, but so, for example, during COVID, there was, you know, very high unemployment at first and fear of people moving about and that sort of stuff, so they made that. You might imagine if there was a really devastating wildfire, they might make similar, you know, declaration findings, but.
Good, thank you. Okay, we'll move into future agenda items.
I wanted to mention two things. Before, I think this was like maybe six months ago, I mentioned that we had had a woman come to speak to us from Legal Aid, and she spoke about how to keep renters in their home so they don't become homeless, and she gave us a great presentation with a lot of ideas. And I had asked if maybe we could have a discussion of some of those ideas to see if it's anything we would want to do or could afford to do, but so far, that hasn't made it onto the agenda. And the other thing that I wanted to mention was the property downtown formerly known as the Community Garden is up for sale, and I was hoping that we could have a discussion to see if maybe it's something the City of Cloverdale would like to get a grant from the county if that's possible to make into a city park. It's kind of a historical piece of property. It's got to make into a city park. It's kind of a historical piece of property. It's got many old fruit trees on it. It's charming. In my mind, I'm sure this, you know, if it was something that was possible, we could figure out what to do with that property, but, you know, and we could have maybe a town hall even for suggestions. But it's so close to the pool at the Veterans, I was thinking the YMCA could, you know, have like daycare, day camp there in the summer in the morning, and then go swimming in the afternoon. They could put some picnic tables in the shade for the children at the summer camp to do crafts projects. You know, there's just so many things that property could be made into, and it would be a good financial investment, because it's already, in the last two years since, you know, it was sold, it's already really gone up in price. So I was just hoping we could have a discussion on that and maybe brainstorm and see if it's something that the city would be interested in purchasing with a grant or not.
So let's start with the first one, if you don't mind. Has that lady been invited to the homeless Subcommittee and done that presentation?
She came to the homeless Subcommittee and gave a wonderful presentation.
And with that, did you guys come up with some ideas that might want to be presented here or anything like that?
No, we didn't. Like, I guess our hope was to take it to all of us and see if, you know, any of those were actually doable for the city of Cloverdale.
Well, let me open it up to the council and see how they would like to handle. They want to have it narrowed down or have a presentation come to us directly?
She did, she. She gave a great presentation. There was a lot of good information. So I think what we were, what we're gearing for is having her come up here and actually give that presentation to all of council. So that's what we'd like to go with that, and we can contact her and see if she'd be willing to do that, and I'm almost positive she would. So we'll get a hold of her and see if we can run it up and.
She doesn't work for Legal Aid anymore, unfortunately, so maybe we could get somebody else from Legal Aid.
Is this something we should wait and see the county and what they do before we start having these discussions?
In general, the county's ordinances on, on this topic wouldn't apply within the city, except in the emergency context. I, I don't know if someone else from Legal Aid is available, or if, if we have the list, we could put together something brief for the council to, just to tee off a conversation, tee up rather, a conversation.
Okay. Well, why don't we turn it over to Kevin and have you do a little bit of research into this and see which direction you want to go, if you want it to be a, a presentation done by Legal Aid, or if you want it to be something that is just a discussion within our own that you bring the information to. Is that, is that fair?
Perfect.
Second half.
Well, I was still in the first half. Or maybe we could discuss it together at the next homeless committee of how we want to present it to the city council.
Bring it to the next homeless committee, and we'll gather game plan together and.
Two reps are, want that, I think that's a much better idea, personally.
So let the homeless committee.
The homeless committee.
Yeah. This way staff's not involved in.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, second half. I think that should go to a Subcommittee as well, personally. Does anyone have any comments about this that they want to make now? Seeing none, I think that this should be something that, it should be discussed and could be to see if it's even a feasible option for Cloverdale. I guess I see.
Well, what Subcommittee would we give this to?
Well, it could be two, in my opinion. It could be the finance, or it could be the sustainability.
Yeah.
I would say finance would probably be number one, because it's, can we afford it?
Yeah. Well, that's the big thing. If there's grants available, that's one thing, but if it's funding out of the city council coffers, I'm not so sure that the, that the funding is there.
And that's why I don't want to waste other people's time on the sustainability. I think if we went to finance first to see how we would make it happen, and if it's even an option, and then if it's not, well, we tried. And if it is, then we can discuss it further. But I think that, you know, with the budget the way it is, we need to be real careful and really see other funding sources before you look at ours, because ours is in the negative. So.
So I think what I hear council seeing is like is to do kind of a feasibility assessment as to whether it's even an option to consider purchase. Ultimately, real property negotiations usually discussed in closed session. And the first step would be authorization to conduct an appraisal, which we would ultimately have to do as part of a, any, any step moving forward, which will, will would require a, a budget authorization from council to, to undertake that appraisal and determine, the, the purpose of which is to determine the public, the value under which we could, you know, if you, if we decided to move forward, pay for the, the subject property. But, but absent an appraisal, we can kind of look generally at the merits. What are some of the, if you want to say pros and cons, if you will? You know, look at zoning, look at what are maybe some.
David, I think that's the, the better direction, before we spend a dollar on it.
Okay.
Because we don't have a dollar to spend, and I don't want to spend money on an appraisal out of a budget that's in the deficit, until we know that it's something that we can handle.
I was just gonna add, and perhaps staff can look to, you know, are there even any grants for the size and type of property? You know, I think it's probably too small for the Open Space District, and so, you know, brief research whether there are grants that we could even look.
I, I doubt it will be a fit for them, and, but we can call Misty and ask and see if it would fit, and, and then go from there. That's, that's a big step right there, but.
My hope was maybe that there was county-city grants, you know, for a park in, within a city, like.
And that's what we can absolutely look at for, absolutely. But before we spend money, like.
Oh, for sure.
$20,000 on an appraisal, I'd rather.
Well, yeah.
See that. So if we could do that, just, and then bring it back to the Finance Committee to see, even if it's just a three-minute discussion, that the answer's no, whatever it is. So, thank you, guys. Does that work?
Oh, that's fine.
Anyone else with any future agenda items? All right. Well, meeting adjourned, 6:54. Thank you.